Good doctor. That's great. Father, we pause our busy schedules to give thanks to you and be reminded of all the privileges and freedoms we enjoy as citizens of this great nation and as residents of this community. Help us to always be reminded that we are to use our freedoms to care for one another and to love one another. I pray, Father, you'll give wisdom and guidance to this council in the decisions that they make for the betterment of our community. We ask your blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Here.
Callinger?
Here.
Jimenez?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Versace?
Here.
Walling?
Here.
Gates?
Here. Brings us to the community comments section. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included in the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council and asked to keep statements brief. Time will be limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions are to be asked of the city staff, council members, or the mayor prior to speaking to the full council, so concerns may be properly researched and answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anybody that cares to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item five is the consent agenda. All items appearing on the consent agenda are considered to be retained by the city council and shall be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired, that item shall be removed, discussed separately, and approved by a separate motion to the city council. I would like to at least point out a couple of items. One is item E, which is a pay request in the amount of $194,000 and change to DDVI for the work on the fire station. Then there are items F, G, H, I, and J that I think are all tied to the facade grant. Item L, it's a resolution to amend the contract with Garden Associates by $6,500 for the emergency power system replacement at the Northeast Wastewater Treatment Plant. And then the last item, it's a resolution approving and directing the city attorney to initiate condemnation proceedings for four properties. And that's associated with, is that a wastewater project?
Wastewater installed on.
All right. Do I have a motion? So move.
Okay.
Discussion?
Yeah, I had one question, but the city manager cleared it up. On the facade grants, the dollars are still the same dollars we talked about when we started.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Callinger?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Versace?
Yes.
Takes us into our regular agenda, starting with A. It's a public hearing. Consider a resolution levying a special assessment against private property for emergency abatement of a property located at 610 North C Street, Oskaloosa, by the city of Oskaloosa, Iowa, in accordance with 8.08.080 of the city code of the city of Oskaloosa, Iowa. This is the time for the public hearing on levying a special assessment against the property owned by B.C. Investments LLC and T. Laiba Lira LLC located at 610 North C Street, Oskaloosa, Iowa, for repairs to remedy and correct building conditions of the property. A certified notice of the hearing was sent to the property owner and notice of hearing was published in the Oskaloosa Herald prior to the public hearing date. First, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody that cares to speak?
Yes, I'm Jerry Saylor, Agent for T. Laiba Lira LLC, 610 North C. I don't know what my latitude is to speak, but I just, I never got a notice, no one got a notice that this was going to be done. And I've talked with the building inspector, and I understand that he has a lot to do. But he took a week to tell the people in that building before it burned down that it was a dangerous building and that they could, it was very hazardous to occupy. So my contention at that time was, in fact, you all have my paperwork if you didn't, if you still have it. I sent it two months ago, asking for an appeal on that particular thing. He spent over a week to tell these people that this building they were living in was too dangerous to live in. And so my contention is that either it wasn't that dangerous, or he was negligent in allowing those people, four families with children, to live there in that building for 10 days without telling them. And so the same thing happened after the fire. And after the fire, I got no notice of anything. I went the day after the fire and talked with the gentleman that was there, who's in the business of tearing down old buildings. He informed me that since the walls were attached to the corners, that they were not an immediate hazard, and they would be okay until we got it torn down. And I had talked with Wyatt on the phone. I talked with the fire chief, who said that they were, the city was going to push the walls down. That was the day after the fire. And then got a same phone call and said that they weren't going to push them down for some reason, and that it was cordoned off, so it was not going to be hazardous to the public. So anyway, the major thrust of mine is that I was not notified of anything, and apparently there's plenty of time to notify of hazards for people living in a building, but not for a building standing by itself, away from everybody else, on a corner. And so I think that since I wasn't notified, and there's a court, we had a hearing on it, and the court stated in their opinion, or not their opinion, in their ruling, that I was not notified properly. So I think without the proper notification, it's pretty hard for the city to follow the law, if they weren't following the law in the first place. So I don't think it should be my responsibility to pay for it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, council members, for the presenter? Do you have anything to add?
If you have any questions for me, Jerry and I actually, we had visited about this a number of times. Jerry had gotten in touch with me and done a good job as we had visited back and forth on the thing. We had discussed it, and I'm speaking now primarily, of course, after the fire, when the building looked, as you see in the photographs there. But we had visited about the need to get the building torn down. Jerry had indicated and recognized, obviously, the building needed to come down. In our conversations, as I recall, Jerry had indicated to me a couple of times, he had somebody lined up to tear down the building, but he did not have any money to pay them. They were not going to go ahead and act, of course, until they got paid. And ultimately, as I recall our conversations, I'm speaking without the file in front of me, but as I recall our conversations, we indicated that we would, the city would go ahead and take it down, as I recall. You said that was fine. I forget your exact phrase, but I don't know if it was something, I don't, can't recall if you said washing your hands of that, or in any event, something stepping back and recognizing that the city was going to go ahead and tear down the building. That's my recollection generally, without having the file in front of me.
So the action tonight is for taking care of demolition?
That is true. We've actually got two things going. There's a separate action going on now relative to cleanup of the, what remains there, and that's one Jerry's talking about, where we'd had the trial in front of the magistrate the other day. And my understanding is that Billy Claywell, who is the principal of B.C., is that correct, Jerry? B.C. Investments, my understanding is that you have somebody lined up to go ahead and take care of that. But the issue tonight is for the demolition of the structure itself, bringing it down.
Yes. It's not actually demolition, it's pushing the walls.
Pushing it in, correct.
Well, who does the certified notice of the hearing go to? It would be a signed off certified notice, wouldn't it? It says certified notice of hearing was sent to property owner.
He, I believe Mr. Saylor was talking about?
Yes, the hearing notice was sent to me. I'm referring to the notice that the city was supposed to give before they take action on the property.
You mean after the fire?
Pardon?
After the fire?
Yes, sir.
We expect you to get rid of it after the fire. I mean, as soon as possible, but.
Is there a reclamation to the city code?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there anyone else that cares to speak during the public hearing? Not close the public hearing? Do we have a motion on the resolution?
Is there a motion?
Motion, Scotty? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion with council?
I say, end this the motion.
Scotty.
I guess there's no rebuttal to the statements made, huh?
I can't hear you, Tom.
No rebuttal to the statements made tonight?
Mayor and council, we have a file over here. Let's just take a quick look.
There is, I'm not sure who sent it out, but, well, Wyatt Russell, it's a notice of effect. I think they went to two different places.
Give that to the mayor, pro temp.
I don't remember who sent it.
I know that one of them did come back. It was returned unclaimed its warrant, and that was the notice of effect that went out by the engineer's office.
So a notice was sent out.
But that's different.
Is that a notice to tear the place down after the fire? Is that what that is?
No.
No.
What is it?
This was a notice of that it was unsafe. It was sent on, I can't find the date.
There is no date on it, nor is there a signature. And I was required to go spend 90 days.
Let's see, back, let's see.
Mr. Mayor, if I could call you that tonight, Mr. Mayor, pro temp. If I could explain to you, my understanding of this is that Wyatt had gone ahead, Wyatt had initially sent out this notice that you've got there. Now, as Jerry has indicated, that was sent out at a point in time prior to the fires on the building. I don't believe that there was a subsequent notice that was sent out after the fire on the building and after the building looked like that. Although, first of all, it would be our contention that the first notice would have been sufficient, because that also speaks of repair or demolition, number one. Number two, that the language of city ordinances does allow for emergency abatement of a property in any event. When such abatement does pose a safety hazard, and it would certainly be the city's position that that did, in that condition, pose a safety hazard to the adjoining property owners and the folks around there, so.
Which time did pose a hazard, the time of this first one that I protested, or the second one that I didn't get?
Well, to speak to that, first of all, and obviously I didn't send out that initial notice, but my contention and my feeling and belief would be that initially, the conditions complained of in the notice would have posed a hazard, of course, to the tenants. As I recall, that raised structural issues and things to that concern. Now, after that, though, on the second, that clearly would relate to the physical condition of the property itself and the risk it would pose to kids in the neighborhood or falling as to adjacent properties.
And Mayor and council, you might recall, 610 was one of the properties that was showed during a rental inspection discussion, which I think all of you said were deplorable conditions. So that was, those pictures were taken when Wyatt inspected the property and said that people needed to be vacated.
So we're mixing the two things together, making it sound worse than?
But our, but our action tonight is strictly, that's what I want to be clear on, good point, sir, is there was a fire?
Two fires, actually.
Two fires?
That is correct.
And we pushed the building down?
Yes.
To clear the danger, and this assessment is for the costs associated with pushing those walls down. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that it was pushed down, once again, after the conversations I'd had with Jerry that I described.
How long after? Do you remember?
You know, I don't. I can't recall, because I know you and I communicated several times through there, and I'm sorry.
It wasn't quite enough for an emergency to get it done immediately, though.
I'm sorry?
It wasn't an emergency enough to get it done immediately, though, right? Just as it wasn't an emergency to get the people out when their house was falling.
After the fire, do you mean?
Yes.
I would certainly, I mean, in my own mind, now, once again, if I was a tenant, living there with the structural issues that Wyatt complained about or made note of, I would have been concerned living there. But I think it posed a different type of risk, as shown in the photographs, to the public at large, as opposed to a tenant.
Absolutely different. Not nearly as egregious as the first, if they were accurate, which they weren't. But this being with the corner of the structure there, holding it up, it's not an immediate hazard. And I was told that by the fellow who does that for a living. But my contention is that since it wasn't an immediate hazard, it wasn't knocked over the day after, or two days after, or three days after. So it wasn't an immediate, immediate hazard. So it could have had a notice sent out properly by the city, as per code, and I could have abated it had I had that notice.
Well, except for two things.
But it wasn't that big an emergency.
Except for two things. Number one, my personal feeling would be, looking at the condition of that property shown in the photographs, that that definitely was a risk, number one. But number two, you and I had the conversations, you conceded, yes, it needs to come down, but I can't afford to take it down. And ultimately, when I told you then the city was going to take it down, you said that was fine, the city could go ahead, because you didn't have the money to hire somebody to get it taken down at that point in time.
If they wanted to do the whole thing. I have, actually offered to give you the property. The first statement you make, I certainly respect your expertise as an attorney, but your expertise as a structural engineer is probably somewhat lacking. And I was in the property, and I was pushing on the walls, and with another guy who tears down properties for a living, and it wasn't an imminent danger. It's a nuisance. I mean, it looks horrible, and it was a nuisance, but it wasn't an imminent danger. There was no reason for the city to give somebody $1,000 to drag a backhoe in there and push it over, unless they were going to tear the building down and get rid of it, as we talked about.
Yeah, I certainly understand what you're saying. I would take issue with that insofar as the safety aspects, but I understand what you're saying.
Legally, respect your opinion. Structurally, probably not.
Okay. Is there any other comments from council in our discussion period? All right, roll call.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Callinger?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Versace?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes. Okay, moving to the letter B of our agenda, the presentation of the second quarter code enforcement report, where that's going to be presented by Chief Neff from the Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We're going to try to give you a second quarter update here, not try to. We're going to try to do this every quarter, try to bring you up to speed on what our code enforcement efforts have been. We're a little behind. We just come up with this plan about this will be the second quarter, so it'll be April to June. So we'll start with the process here, just a little bit to re, get everybody's brain engaged here, how we do this.
You're asking a lot of us, chief.
It does, it's a process that I think everybody needs to be up to speed on, how we do it. The Fire Department receives a complaint. When we go out, we take photos, we make an attempt to make a personal contact with that property owner. We don't just leave the notice and leave, we try to make personal contact with them. After we've made that contact, we talk with them, try to explain what needs to be done, what corrections to be made. Then we go back and we enter all the information into the system. After three days, we'll go back and we'll revisit this property, noting any changes. Depending on what we see at that point, the next steps vary just a little bit. So if progress is being made, we give additional time to the property owners. We'll talk to them, say, hey, how much longer do you need? What kind of timeframe are we looking at? We do try to set an end date. We don't want it to go on for months. We have one out, and give multiple extensions to folks. You know, they'll work on a little bit at a time. As they have time, we give multiple extensions. If it's a known rental property, staff and/or the city attorney will make contact with the owner. We've got a list upstairs of properties, and we'll call that, the landlord, and say, hey, you've got an issue with your property. They're usually more than receptive to go out and get that corrected. If we don't have any progress being shown on a property, we'll take follow-up photos, and we forward that information on to the city attorney for filing of municipal infractions. Once he has all that information, he files it, and then the waiting begins. We can't do anything else with that property until we get a court date and get an opinion from the court as to what our next steps may be.
Excuse me, interrupt. Is there a typical time, or is that just all over the map on what that time period may be?
Insofar as cleanup, do you mean?
No, it says we have to wait till there's a date. How long does that typically take?
Not as long as you would think with those, because if they're filed as a municipal infraction, they're in front of the magistrate. Now, typically, they have city day just once a month, but generally, it does not take too long to get an infraction set for a hearing, and that usually would be inside a month's time.
Thank you.
So you'll notice on the, on the screen there that we've, I've got the second quarter, April, May, and June broke out here, as far as violations. We'll go on each month separately and get into. In April, we had 11 total violations noted. We had 10 of those completed by staff without any further action. One of those got sent to the city attorney. Then in May, you're going to notice a definite increase. I did some revamping with staff hours. We assigned one individual to that specific duty. In May, we weren't really proactive with it, again, with that one staff member. We had a total of 132 violations. 114 of those were completed without any further actions. And then 18 of those were forwarded on to the city attorney. Unfortunately, in May, I lost a staff member, so that, that member that was doing that is no longer continuing to do that. So June numbers went back down. We were very short staff in June. We had five, five staff members total, really, for the whole month of June. So we had 12 total, 10 again were completed, one referred on to the city attorney. On that slide, eighty?
Chief, can I ask you another quick? When I look at the process, it says it all starts with a complaint. So when I look at the numbers, if they all started with complaints, did we just get a lot more complaints in April and June we didn't address? Because you mentioned that we were able to address more with people.
Right.
But did that mean we started initiating our own, or did we just answer more complaints?
We answered more complaints, and we got more proactive with the system. So that first slide was actually a little bit inaccurate. We've been trying to be proactive, but we don't have staffing. We wait for the complaints to come in, and then we go get them.
What does proactive mean?
Proactive means we're out looking and, we have areas of town that we know we need to go look at and need cleaned up, and we're trying to be proactive and go out and talk to folks. And again, usually by talking to them, they'll start their own cleanups as such.
So how many in May, then, were complaints, and how many were proactive?
In, in May, they were, it was a much more proactive month. I would guess the numbers were probably 10 to 12 again. That's, that's about what our average runs, as far as complaints coming in. Those, those numbers have stayed pretty consistent.
So is it safe to say, if we get a complaint, independent of staffing levels, we're going to address any public complaints?
Mm-hmm.
Any month?
Yeah. Yeah, any, any complaints that come in, we're on it within two to three days.
Okay.
That would be the timeframe. Hopefully, the same day. But again, it just depends on, on staffing levels.
Thank you.
So again, 85% of these are settled without any further action by the city attorney. We go out, we visit with the folks. Most everybody has been really receptive. You've always got a few that are a little grumpy with it, but they understand what we're trying to do. So second quarter activity in April, we had four hard surface parking. Again, we talked to people, they moved them. We had seven, either junk, debris, weeds. Six of those folks complied. We sent one on to the city attorney. Second quarter, again, for May, we had 94 hard surface parking. A lot of folks still parking on the grass, and it's just, when you see one in the neighborhood, that, you just kind of turn around and there's more. So again, those were, 74 of those were, were completed by the property owners themselves. We sent nine to city attorney, 38 for junk, debris, weeds. Forty of those got cleaned up. So we're having pretty good success. And then again, here in June, I've got half on the city attorneys, because the one that we sent to them was for both hard surface parking and junk and debris. One thing I might note, that's not on the, it's not on the sheets there, but in May, we had that one staff individual work, he worked for three weeks and three days, basically on code enforcement stuff. And he, with the additional staff we had there, we had about 150 staff hours total in that month of just code enforcement. The other, the other two months were 80 for April and 63 for June, as a reference. So here's, here's some before and afters. Again, hard surface parking violation, the jeep's up underneath the tree. Again, this is the process we use, and all the photos are dated. We went up, talked to this individual, they moved it. Problem solved. The next one is one that we'd be looking for, where we'd have garbage, junk on the porch. Again, the before and after photos. So the photo on the left was a before, and then afterwards, they had it cleaned up. So we give, we give these folks a little extra time to get it cleaned up, but they were, they were very receptive to it. Here's another. Again, just the junk and salvage along the side of the, side of the house there. We visited with them, gave them a few days, they got that cleaned up. You'll see this a lot, garbage and stuff out along the curbs. Once in a while, we'll run into evictions, where they'll have to sit there for an extended time, because we can't do anything with it. The sheriff's department has performed an eviction on it. We can't do anything with that property until that property, the owners of that property has been set out and come back to you to collect it. Here's another one. Again, just mattress laying outside, old washer or dryer. They cleaned that up. Problem properties. We have these. One of them is, this is actually 328 North Market. You can see that in July of 2014, we had issues. March of '16, we've had issues. August of '16, we've had issues. It's, it's been a property that we visit regularly. This is another problem property we've had. Again, you can see in July of '14, August of '15, July of '16. This is one that's been to court. There's been judgments entered against it, and we're still fighting the battle. Any other questions?
Chief, on 328 North Market, County Health Guide involved in that also?
Yes, that, well, the, the most recent one, yes, he was.
Where they got evicted.
Yes. That was a property here that we just recently went up and, and worked over.
Any other questions of the chief, Mayor? Thank you.
Mayor and council, just a quick question for all of you. Is, is this the type of information?
Mayor and council, just a quick question for all of you. Is this the type of information that you see as helpful? Do you like to receive these reports? I guess I'm trying to get a gauge on what you'd like to have from us going forward. I think it's good to show the work that we're trying to accomplish, be very public about that, but if you would like to see something else, I'd appreciate that feedback. And it doesn't have to be right now.
From my perspective, very helpful, and I'd like to see the... Continue to correlate. I'd like to see how we can continue to remain consistent in how we do things and how we can perform and understand certainly staff difficulties, but you know, we've all talked about, there's plenty of opportunity out there for us to continue to make the city look better, and we want to continue to do that. Any comments from others?
I agree with what you say.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Item C is to consider a resolution approving the 2016 downtown alley improvement project. 2016 downtown alley improvement project has been prepared by staff as part of annual street maintenance repairs and pavement preservation. $100,000 total budgeted for project number 2010-72. Scope of the project involves the concrete paving of approximately 500 square yards of the north-south public alley from A Avenue East to High Avenue East between North Second Street and North Third Street. This project also includes the reconstruction of the south approach of the alley on High Avenue. Currently, the pavement in this alley is a mixture of brick, concrete, gravel, and dirt, is uneven, and does not adequately divert water away from the buildings. The estimated cost for this project was $35,450. Competitive quotes for this project were received on Friday, August 5th, with the lowest quote being from TK Concrete Incorporated for $30,550. Council awards this construction contract, and staff recommends authorizing an additional $4,500, which is approximately 15% of the contract amount, as construction contingency for unforeseen circumstances, and also to authorize the mayor to execute all related contract documents contingent upon receipt and approval of bond documents. Staff has recommended that the city council approve the downtown alley improvement project as presented. Do we have a motion?
Move.
Any discussion?
I think the property owners should take care of this.
Exactly. Is that an agreement?
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure to put on that.
Is there any serious discussion?
I was curious how this one got picked. I mean, I know... I'm not saying this one doesn't need it. There's a lot that need it, so I just was curious, the process.
Mayor and council, the reason... And this item is part of that $100,000 that was budgeted for just various improvements. If you look at the work that's going on now, North First, that is being done out of this $100,000 funding pot. So it's supposed to pick up kind of the smaller odds and ends projects that never get done. So these alleys, this alley in particular, is bad. It's really bad. We have issues with water getting into the property.
Well, the east-west alley is really bad, too, there. That's what stirred my question.
Correct. And that one is tied to a sanitary sewer project from years ago that still needs to be completed, and so that's on the radar as well.
How does it fit in the budget when behind the city attorney's office, the bottom fell out of the alley, kind of so to speak? How does that fit into everything?
I think we're still trying to figure out who's responsible for that particular project.
Okay, gotcha. I just wondered, because I saw a hole there, and it's a pretty good-sized hole, so.
For what it's worth, too, if I can indicate, I visited with some water department employees in the alley the other day. They were there, and it is apparently a private sewer line and not a city sewer line. So we have gone ahead and I've made arrangements. Somebody we've paid to come in, they fixed the pipe. We're going to split it with the adjacent owners. They fixed the pipe, they filled it in with gravel. I think that needs to settle some, and as I understand, there's going to be a concrete cap put in, some asphalt overlay.
So, thank you to you for taking care of that problem, huh?
Thank you, yes. I think Chad has...
We had staff that went out and investigated what was going on last week, and then talked to the property owners in the area. They did some diet testing to try and determine who was and wasn't on that line, and then go back and have that discussion.
That's right, middle of the alley, though, isn't it? I mean, kind of. I think it's kind of correct.
It is, yeah. It's down eight, nine feet. It's an old tile line. Some of the... You call it the bell or the horn was cracked in a couple spots and...
And it started sucking air. It was starting to void, and it was probably a bit of asphalt.
It's not a real good area of town.
Well, maybe we should come back to this item with that comment. We have a motion and a second, I believe. Any other discussion? No, roll call, please.
Burnett?
Yes.
Calagery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Forsteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Yes. Going to item D, which is to consider a resolution approving and authorizing execution of an amendment to the development agreement between the city and Oskaloosa Downtown Development LLC. The city council previously approved a development agreement with Oskaloosa Downtown Development LLC, also referred to as ODD, on October 19th, 2015, for the purpose of providing $500,000 in the form of a grant using tax increment financing revenue funds. In return for the grant, ODD committed to construct certain minimum improvements consisting of the blighted fire damaged structure known as the Swims Building, more particularly described as the reconstruction of a commercial residential mixed-use building with the first floor remaining commercial and the second floor being turned into apartments, together with all related site improvements as outlined in the current development agreement. ODD has submitted a request to the city for an amendment to the term of the development agreement. The amendment provides additional time to construct the minimum improvements, moving the compliance date from December 31, 2016, to October 1, 2017. In addition, the annual certification process needs to be modified to match the change in the timeline to complete the minimum improvements. ODD has stated the additional time is necessary as they now... They are now working with the adjoining property owners to construct, renovate, or reconstruct additional residential units within the entire block, referred to as the Evans Block. ODD representatives will be on hand to provide additional development plans to the city council. Do I have a motion to consider this resolution?
Second.
As part of the discussion, do we have any questions, or would we like to have a presentation from members of the ODD? I think many of the council members toured the facility earlier, and we considered this as a work session, so I don't know that we need to spend time on it unless there's questions. Roll call, please.
Calagery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Forsteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Okay. Going to item E, which is consider an ordinance to approve a parking restriction along the North Seventh Street S-curve between J Avenue East and F Avenue East. This is the first reading. Due to resident visibility and safety concerns along the North Seventh Street S-curve between J Avenue East and F Avenue East, staff has been directed to perform a study regarding the on-street parking in the area. Currently, no parking restrictions exist along this section of North Seventh Street. This section of North Seventh Street is 30 feet in width, which will not allow for two-way traffic if vehicles are parked on both sides of the street. Therefore, visibility and travel lane width are limited, especially along the S-curve when vehicles are parked on both sides of the street. After visiting the site, staff recommends restricting parking along the east side of the street due to an existing fire hydrant and retaining wall along that side of North Seventh Street. It says, "See the map," which we have up on the screen. "In the past three years," being 2013 through 2015, "there have been no crashes along this section of North Seventh Street." Although not a part of the traffic engineering analysis for parking studies, the survey responses from property owners are attached separately," which I believe we received them tonight. Is that correct? The recommended action, the staff recommends that the city council approve the ordinance authorizing a parking restriction along North Seventh Street as presented. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion. I guess from my standpoint, having just seen this tonight, Akilish, could you give us a quick summary of what the survey says, since I don't think we had a chance to review it?
I don't know.
Walk us through what we have here, if you would, please.
Akilish Pal, Public Works Director. The summary of the survey is primarily, you see, approximately 38 to 40% of the residents want some sort of parking restriction, and 20% of them, 20 to 25% do not want any kind of parking restriction there. There's other comments where they believe either we should not do anything about it, or we should do something about it. So that's a survey of it. We have... The reason for this request was based on a complaint that we, as Public Works, we received for lack of visibility when there are cars parked on that S-curve, and which is the case. We have driven on that S-curve, and if there's one single car parked there, it hinders the visibility of that driving on that street.
You said one to... On both sides?
Either side. Right now, parking is allowed on both sides of the road. Having said that, I mean, our accident analysis shows that there is no accidents in the last three years, so it's a road where I believe there's not too much traffic. It's one of the low-travel roads, but if there's any cars parked there, it literally hinders the visibility.
Do we have other known area... I mean, typical 30-foot width street, would we have parking restricted at least on one side? Would that be our standard throughout the city?
We have both ways. We have streets which permits parking on a 30-feet road on both sides. We have roads which restricts parking on one side, and the reason for restricting parking on most streets are primarily because of traffic flow or visibility concerns or any traffic concerns that you have on the road is why you restrict parking.
Thank you. Any further commentary, discussion from the council? Did we get a motion? Thought we did. It's been a long night. I guess roll call.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Forsteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
All right. I think that takes us through our regular agenda. Moving on to any reports from city staff. How about we start with city clerk tonight, just because I think we're going to get something from our city manager.
No, sir, thank you.
City attorney.
I have nothing, thank you.
And I'm not sure I'm allowed to go out of order like that.
It threw me off completely.
That'll teach the mayor from losing. That's why I look at it. Let's go back to the city manager.
Thank you, sir. Just a quick reminder, I don't know how quick it'll be, but we do have in your packet, based on the initial study session that the city council held a couple weeks ago, where we discussed the concept of instituting a rental inspection program for the community in 2017. We did put together a one-page summary document, and that is included in the packet. And really, my item, my report, is to specifically call out that we're going to have a study session on the 23rd of this month at 5:30 in the library. We will review the presentation that was given during the initial study session. We'll have that revised, updated, and then have additional photos of properties that have been inspected or we've gone into for various reasons. It would show conditions that we would say are unacceptable as a community, and have any further discussion that you would see fit to provide us direction as staff as we put together this program for you as council. So this is just a reminder, getting the word out, that we do have the study session on the 23rd at 5:30.
Any questions, comments from council members on that?
I've talked to some people already and had some good discussions. I have to say, most of them, they've had some negativity, but they've had some positive points, and I'd like to build on that. I think that it's important. I mean, to the point of even volunteering to be on committees, you know, that type of thing. So I think we can build on that and hopefully have a productive meeting at the library. Hindsight's 2020, I know, but the timeline at the end, I think caught people off guard. They felt like, well, okay, here's another done deal, and they're going to tell us how it's going to be. And I don't think we intend that, do we? I mean, we really want them to... Them is a broad term, I know, but the people that do rentals here to buy into it, so that's my comments.
Any comments or questions for my...
I'm not, Tom. I've had three or four, at least four. They were all positive, and they were people like Browers, and she indicated they couldn't be at the meeting, but they would support it 100%. So I've heard positive things about it.
Thank you. Anything else, final? Thank you. I guess moving on to any comments from item eight, I guess, is comments from city council. Start down with you, Joe, from tonight. Nope. Aaron?
Another comment I'd like to make is, I voted against the alley being redone by Smokey Row. I would like to congratulate the people that designed it, because I think they've done a super good job. And I voted against it because of the delivery trucks, not because I was against the alley being redone. But the alley cats, I think that's what they call themselves, had a very good job, excellent job. And it's being used.
Thank you. Scotty?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you.
We won't tell the mayor how well you did.
All right.
No, nothing, sir.
Steve?
Sir, I'm fine, thank you.
And I have nothing to add tonight. I certainly would entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We're finished.